Does anybody have any reason to abstain for financial or non-financial conflicts of interest?
I do not.
Kettering, nay or not?
I do not?
I do not.
I would ask if anyone would approve the agenda?
Who approves?
Second. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Ketterings, seconded by Commissioner Clemish. Do we have to vote on that?
Yep.
Yep.
And I would, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, say nay. All right, now is the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against any members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair, or in this instance, the vice chair, has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Do we have any public comment? Then we'll move on to the Kramer Kenyon House.
This chair, could I have a brief moment?
No.
No, it's important. I just got an email from Gary Vetter. There's a scam going out saying that citizens owe Yankton County Planning Commission money for a fee. It's a scam, so if you do get this as an email or a letter, please contact 605-260-4400, extension number nine. We've also sent this to the state's attorney and the sheriff. Just public announcement for the people out there, so.
Is this going around by email, by text, or by phone?
Gary, email as of right now, no.
All right then. Now, we're on to the Kramer Kenyon home. And then when you get up there, up to the podium, turn your microphone on so our at-home listeners can... There we go.
My voice is pretty strong, but Linda Stevenson, I actually live on the same block as the Kramer Kenyon House. The Kramer Kenyon House was built in about 1896, and it was taken over in 1976 by a group in Yankton who were interested in preserving it for the town, for the tourism industry, for the house itself. I've been on the board for about, I don't even know, three to five years probably, and I'm president this year. I appreciate the fact that you do consider giving us some money. Or, basically, we use it for maintenance. I was thinking about the amount, and I thought, probably pays the water bill for the whole year, or maybe the electric bill. Anyway, this board is one of the most active boards, hands-on boards for fundraising that I've ever been on. We meet every month. We have two or three fundraisers a month, and neither one raised tons of money, but they keep us afloat. And one of them is our mystery dinner, which we have about a dozen people. They have to agree to it, they have to provide a fee for it, and we have a, somebody gets murdered, and it's so fun! And we have, it's just gotten bigger and bigger. Now we have one, we do one twice a month. We also do tours all summer. Basically, Wednesday through Sunday, we do tours for the public to come in and look at the house and hear the history. And it's really very interesting. It has been very well-preserved, and I actually looked at it before I bought the house I bought because I was looking for an older home. Well, it was just too well-preserved for me to buy it and turn five or six kids loose in it. So I'm glad I didn't do it. But I did meet the man who owned the house at the time, who was Herb Kenyon, and he was 80 years old, and he had just come down from doing the leaves in the eve troughs. Okay. All right, now, our monthly bills amount to about $1,200 to $1,300, and half of that is our insurance, which we have worked on for years trying to get it done. We think maybe when we are going to get a new roof, we have to get a new roof. We have been saving money for that new roof, and we just recently had someone who is going to be a very large donor towards our new roof. So we're very grateful. Hopefully, we'll get it done yet this year. We do have a couple certificates of deposit, but that's really just various, I think maybe $10,000.
Damn.
Wait a minute, I don't even know if that's right. Yeah, totally, total, they are about $10,000. So we don't have anything extra, and we're always looking for new ways to have fundraisers. But you know, every organization in town has fundraisers, so... We do our own yard work, we do all the cooking for our dinners, we do our own cleaning. One day, I was over there polishing the woodwork, and I thought, "Are you nuts, Lynda? You've got your own woodwork to polish." Anyway, I will appreciate any money the county can give us, and we will use it basically towards our monthly expenses. Do you have any questions?
I do. Did you say you have two murder mysteries a month?
Yes.
I was not, I thought you had two a year.
No, we have, well, we get, we've, somehow, we've figured out some way to get the information out there, and now they are requesting us doing it. And we do all the cooking, we do all the cleanup, we do, we serve. Somebody is usually in costume, and it becomes quite a night, and there's a lot of laughter, so it's a fun evening.
So how does one find out about that?
You can call me, you can find it on Facebook, and there's something else out there. A Yankton Facebook. That seems to be a big deal. You can tell my age, I just can't figure out Facebook. But you can call any one of us on the board, and we do have an, we do have someone living at the house now that we trade for. They get to live there as long as they keep up the house and take care of a lot of these things.
Anything else?
You guys are asking for $2,000?
That would be great. That is what you've given us in the past.
And I'd just like to also, you know, remind a lot of the nonprofits, they, the county is already not collecting any property tax on those, they're not nonprofits as well. So I know the last chairman, I just reminded that, so that's, could also be considered a donation by the county, so.
I will take that back because I hadn't even thought of that.
Similar house like this would, you know, would probably be $4,000 or $5,000 in property taxes, but.
I think it'd be about double.
I think our intentions as a commission is to take a closer look at all expenditures in these requests. We are challenged with an extremely, extremely tight budget. We don't know exactly what the bottom line is yet, but we will hopefully support in some manner most of the requests.
Well, we do appreciate it. As I said, we would do more fundraising if we could think of an efficient way to do it, but I do think, Yankton being the historical city in the state of South Dakota, we do have a nice promotion going on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up, the Mead Museum.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take, all right, no, that's fine. No, that's fine. I'll share, I'll share.
You can have mine when I'm done. All right. Hello, thank you for your time. I'll make it quick. Our newsletter just happened to get done, so you guys get the first fresh copy, literally fresh copy, so lucky you. Couple things I wanted to point out. I know in past years I've come to you guys with staff concerns and being able to provide livable wages and, you know, keep my staff as it is. We've been able to maintain this last year, which is really great news. And because you guys did support us with that $20,000 last year, which is what our request is, again, this year, just stay the constant there with the $20,000, is that we used last year to hire Liz McMillan, who is our programming coordinator, and she's featured in this particular newsletter, and she's only part-time, but it's enough to at least help offset some of the rest of our time so that we can do some of the other things that we've been neglecting while we're trying to do outreach, as well as our normal jobs. So that has been very helpful to us. Are we fully staffed? Not at all, but we're keeping our head above water, and so I think that's the most we could ask at this point. But it's a couple of things, too, that I wanted to point out that because you guys have continued to support us, we have been successful in also keeping some of that support in our office. But on page three of your newsletter, there's a full-page dedication to us achieving our funding goal for our Dakota Story exhibit, which is a 2,500 square foot exhibit that we needed $325,000 to help us get it developed and installed. So we are currently finishing writing this exhibit. As you can see, some of the design work has already begun, so you can kind of see what that looks like as well. And then all the people that contributed, not only to the restoration of the space, but also the exhibit part of it. So we had a very good end of the year last year to get this exhibit funded. And that means that since I'm done fundraising for that one, you can probably be seeing me in the coming years because the next exhibit is a Great Dakota Boom, which is all about Yankton County history. So a Dakota Story is going to be really kind of centered around Yankton and the first hundred years of Yankton's history. Great Dakota Boom comes right after that, a 2,500 square foot exhibit that will cover county, communities, immigrant, German, Russian, all those things we're going to cover. So, and that exhibit that we're going to do in Yankton County would be hopefully a catalyst to other museums in the region so that people will want to stay and learn more in our region, so. Questions? I kind of want to let you guys lead the charge on that, if you had any questions. You make this too easy.
Should have gave this the reading material at the end.
Oh, at the end. Oh, so you didn't pay attention?
Is Linda behaving on the board?
So far, so far. Great asset, yeah.
I don't know.
Any questions? All right then.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks, you guys, for your support, appreciate it.
And we'll move on to the Ability Building Service. Put one in John's drawer.
Hello.
Hi, hi, chat.
Standout as well?
I can handle some. Thank you.
I'm Beth Cottle, the director at Ability Building Services. And our letter of ask, I guess, didn't contain those statutes, so I put that in there. And what we're asking for is $22,385 to help defray costs of some of our unfunded mandates and some of the things we do for our citizens here. of some of our unfunded mandates and some of the things we do for our um, our citizens here. Um, I did give you a list of who our um, local residents are that we provide supports to, we provide supports to about a hundred and forty people. Um, sixty-four of them are from Yankton County, some of the unfunded things that we have are for um, transportation and trips to Sioux Falls, to doctors, and some different things like that. So we do have quite a few unfunded mandates that um, we aren't reimbursed for, and um, a lot of that is, um, like I said, um, running to medical appointments and going to Sioux Falls and other places to get people the care they need.
Is there a upper age limit and a lower age limit?
No. Well, we do, I guess, generally it's between seventeen and eighteen would be the youngest people that we would be providing supports to. And then the bottom, no. So, you know, we do provide a lot of supports to people that would otherwise be supported in a nursing home.
So do you go out to other people's homes, or are they all in-house?
We have um, eight different properties that we own. We also rent two apartment complexes. And um, we have staff there, and then we have people that live within the community in apartments. So then we would have follow-along services that would go to, so we're kind of both. Oh, yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
I guess it's an important service for the community.
Yeah, we appreciate your support.
Well, you guys have a tough job too.
Thank you.
We appreciate you, you know, you make a lot of our citizens' lives, lives better, so.
Yeah, I think sometimes people don't realize that we employ a hundred and twenty-five people in the community and that we provide support to probably about a hundred and forty people as well. I think, you know, we do have a large economic impact on the community that I think some people don't, don't recognize. A lot of our staff that work here, they spend their money here and it gets turned around.
Any other questions or comments by the board? Alright.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Then we will move on to the Boys and Girls Club.
Hello, everyone, um, thanks for letting me be here today. My name is Erin Hill and I am a somewhat new Chief Development Officer here um, at Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Plains, of which Yankton is a part. Um, and I believe we sent our request out to you, um, but Yankton has been, Yankton County has been supporting Boys and Girls Club since twenty fifteen in a big way. Um, and so we're hoping to continue that support with an ask this year um, of thirty-five thousand for twenty-twenty-six. Sorry if I bumped the microphone. Um, and I thought I would just read off a few numbers to you all, um, it's part of the ask that we sent in, but um, just to get these things said out loud. Um, since twenty-seventeen, Boys and Girls Club of Yankton has gone from serving two hundred and four youth per day to three hundred and fifty per day currently in twenty-twenty-five. So that means at least three hundred and fifty youth per day have access to healthy da- daily snacks and meals, caring adult mentors, and programs that focus on academic success, character, leadership, and healthy lifestyles. So just a few, um, fun maybe isn't the word, but a few, I think, really impactful numbers. With the county's investment in previous years, this is the kind of impact we can have. So last year we engaged one thousand two hundred and fifty individual youth in our club services. And this is the part that I don't think a lot of people realize that we served over seventy-eight thousand free meals and snacks to Yankton youth. Um, connecting our youth to services and volunteer opportunities totaling seventeen hundred and fifty hours of volunteer, volunteerism by youth. Um, acting as a resource to at least one hundred and eighty local employers who, whose employees utilize the club for a place for their children to be in those out-of-school time hours, which really does directly impact workforce development in the area. We engaged eight hundred and seventy-five youth in homework help, visual arts, and STEM. And led nine hundred individual youth in positive self-esteem, mentorship, nutrition, and physically engaging healthy lifestyle practices. So um, I can continue to read, but um, I'm curious if you guys have any questions. Um, knowing there might be some that I might have to take back and, and get for you just with, with how new I am. But I've been on board for a few months, so happy to answer what questions I can.
Are you guys still doing like a diversion program?
Um, so that has changed up just a little bit, but one of the things that we do is Teen Court Club. And Teen Court Club, um, all members can be part of the judicial system that way. So we have members who participate on a jury or serve as attorneys for juvenile offenders who are actually sentenced to the Teen Court program. Um, and those teen members contribute to the community by, by participating in these learning activities or projects of their choice. So we still do the Teen Courts, yes.
How often do you do the Teen Court?
Teen Court, my understanding is, I think it's monthly, but please don't hold me to that, I could get that for you though. So overall, the programs that we um, we provide do benefit on average about eleven hundred youth in Yankton County every year. So pretty, pretty far-reaching, uh, and of course, we serve youth first grade through twelfth grade, after school and in the summer. So that's what we do. I, I think we get a lot of, a lot of people think we're sort of quote, a daycare, and that is definitely not what we are. We are so, so much more than that to the, to the community, so thanks for letting us be here.
So you charge an annual fee?
We charge an annual fee of one hundred dollars per member.
So if a person has five kids, it's five hundred dollars a year?
It is.
Does that include uh, opportunities to go to, say, the Mead and uh, the Huether Aquatic Center?
That includes just about everything, there are a couple of things throughout the year. Um, my understanding is there can be just a small little fee, like what the school would charge for a field trip, something like that. But overall, it covers everything, food, snacks, programming.
So there's not a separate fee for the, for a Boys and Girls Club participant to go to the Huether Center in the summer?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And we're ahead of schedule, but I see that the City of Yankton is here en masse.
The only one that isn't here is Dana, I don't see her, so if you have library questions, I'll do my best. Um, I think Patty probably provided you with the information we sent over last week. So I'm Amy Leon, I'm the City Manager. Here to visit with you about the uh, shared operations uh, that we historically work together on at the city. So uh, we have requests for the center, Chan Gurnee Airport, Dispatch, and Yankton Community Library. And I'll explain uh, a little bit the difference in uh, the way the proposal looks uh, from last year, anyway. Um, the center, as you know, we share in the capital costs. Um, I think Chris Thury might have come and talked to you guys last week about a need they have um, this year. Um, but we're proposing for twenty-twenty-six, uh, forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. You know, we don't know, uh, because of the age of the building, what might happen. Um, if something else comes up throughout the year, that number can change, of course, but uh, that's what we're proposing. Uh, Chan Gurnee Airport, uh, the county has historically participated in helping uh, offset the costs of operating that airport, as you know, not just part of our transportation network, but an important part to our agricultural uh, community, as well as um, our healthcare network, which we know uh, certainly you guys are aware of the importance of that in Yankton. So we're making a request of uh, fifteen thousand for twenty-twenty-six. Um, our Dispatch Center, uh, we're asking for ninety percent of what is uh, uh, what comes to uh, the county through the E-nine-one-one funds. So you're probably aware that this legislative session, there was a bill that removed the uh, sunset on the additional fee, so we're not exactly sure what uh, what, how to estimate what we may receive this year, but uh, those funds are limited. We know there's a small percentage that uh, the county uses uh, for funding. Uh, however, we are dispatching for um, both city-county uh, uh, entities. And certainly, the costs continue to rise with all the technology and, and staffing increases, et cetera. Uh, just of note, uh, Yankton Dispatch Center was ranked uh, number five in terms of efficiency statewide, we're pretty proud of that. Now, we think we're providing a good service to all our first responders. Uh, and then also, uh, the Yankton Community Library, uh, historically.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the Dispatch Center? I know, I was at, actually at, and appear when they discussed that, is there any talk or, or has there been any communication of kind of taken over dispatch from other areas, and Clay County has a Dispatch Center, Bon Home? And that was something that our legislators have brought up numerous times about the need to have less of those P S apps throughout the state as technology improves. Has there been any discussions on that?
Regionalizing services?
Yeah, you know, from what I understand, you know, back when this was um, HF radios, it was a, a small region and now we can do a lot more with less. And have we done that and seen if Bon Home or Clay would want to share that? I know Hutchinson County works with Davison County for their dispatch.
Yes, so we're receptive to that, if somebody were interested in consolidating centers, I think we'd be receptive to that. We have had uh, in the past, one entity approach us. Uh, but it didn't work out in the end financially for that entity. I happen to be on the state E-nine-one-one board, so I'm aware too that that is an interest among many people in the state that we now do have the technology to, to regionalize. Um, and also, it's difficult to find dispatchers as well, so there's another opportunity too, but um, we are challenged somewhat by geography, that may still maintains, but I think you may see more of that coming uh, in the future.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, and then the Yankton Community Library, um, a- again, historically, the county has assisted in, in funding the operations there. Um, and we're requesting twenty-four thousand dollars uh, in twenty-twenty-six. As um, you guys are all aware, um, your budget I know is tight, our budget is tight this year. Particularly, we had a recent sales tax adjustment from the state, so we're looking at uh, less revenue than we thought we had coming in, so keeping a clear full eye on that, as well as uh, some changes in our uh, economy locally here with Simples uh, no longer operating. Uh, I think we'll all feel the pinch on that uh, here in the months and years to come. Um, hopefully, that won't be a long-term and there'll be something there, but in the interim, um, that was a big employer and that has a ripple effect, as you know. So I'm happy to answer questions, otherwise the department heads are here um, as well to answer technical questions. I will point out that um, this will be the last time you'll see Dave Mingle representing the center uh, as he is uh, finalizing his last few days at the City of Yankton, he's retired, and Brad Bees is here. Um, he's been with the city for some time and is our new Community and Economic Development Director.
One question I have on the library, and I see Dana's here. I know initially years ago, there was no fee for county residents, and then we have since brought that budget up to where it was and that sti- fee still remains. So that's the feedback that I get if you're a rural resident outside municipal limits, you have to pay, is it twenty dollars a year to utilize the library?
It's twenty dollars a card uh, for folks outside of city limits. And I think Dana has a little bit of a fact sheet that she can leave with you or email to Patty to send to you regarding all the services that um, the, the library provides. Um, when you think about the programming, the uh, materials, the uh, technical assistance, the uh, opportunities they have for field trips, park passes, passes for the Aquatic Center. Maybe if you don't want to purchase a, a full pass or can't, uh, you can check those out. So there are a lot of opportunities and a lot of value there. Alternatively, we can talk about paying for part of the operation um, as well, if that would be some other arrangements you guys would want to, want to talk about.
Well, I think we're definitely in the minority of, of uh, libraries that charge for rural residents, is that correct? But I, I would say that.
I don't have the answer to that.
I think it just kind of varies all over, every um, state, every region is different in how they do things. So, yeah, it's, it is different all over, I do have a handout here of all the different things. And I don't know for sure, do you know when they didn't charge for county cards? Cause I know for many, many, many years, they have charged for those cards.
See, I thought uh, in the past it, you remember Don, because we had a, a tough year, I think it was what, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, we cut that back, and then you get, you guys implemented that, that fee. But we are now back up to where we originally were, but there's still the fee. And I'm just wondering if that we could work something out, because that's, that's what I hear back, because you know, we represent the whole county, is people who still come to the city and buy their groceries and, and spend sales tax, they, they just feel it's an issue of fairness.
Sure. Um, we've had that, we've had a fee, it was five dollars for many, many years, and so we ju- adjusted it to twenty dollars, just in kind of an increase of all the different things that we've added as our services, just um, to make that a little more even. But um, we have always had a fee there, so.
Are we, are we unique as far as libraries go of charging a fee for uh, I guess, residents who are members of the community but not the city? Or could you get those numbers, maybe you appreciate that?
I can check on a few things like that. Um, there, many libraries do charge for um, library cards, just if they're outside of service area and stuff like that, so I can do a little more research and get some numbers back too.
Thank you very much.
There questions from your staff?
No, but this is very helpful.
I can't take credit for that, but I thought it was helpful too.
But I had no idea that there were some of these extra things that were available to city residents, but according to Dan, not to county residents without the twenty dollar fee.
I, I, I do think that, you know, um, there, if you fully use the library, there's a lot you can do from educational opportunities to entertainment, um, programming. They've done a lot partnering with the Parks and Recreation Department, so we've expanded programming too, so. We're pretty proud of that and uh, think there is some value there and I don't know what it costs to take kids out to the movies, but, or another example, but you know.
A lot.
There's a lot of things that can be done there for relatively, relatively economically, I think.
As, as far as uh, a new library being built, has that decision been made, or are they still looking?
That decision has not been made, it's on our strategic plan that we need something different than what we have. Our um, facility, while we do a really good job, we've outgrown it and uh, has its limitations. Uh, however, where that conversation stands is, is yet to be seen, you know. At the beginning of this year, I would have told you, by this time of year, we'd be talking about it really seriously. Um, now, fast forward where we've lost a major employer and our sales tax isn't where we want to be. I'm not sure that we're pushing the gas pedal as hard as uh, we once were, maybe we're pumping the brakes a little bit. But that facility is fifty years old. But when you go to, for example, the um, Zoo Man or Snake Man, I'm not sure what we call them, it's, it's elbow to elbow and, and people can't, don't.
It's, it's elbow to elbow and and people can't, don't have access, you know. We also have some challenges with some ADA compliance issues. And really a big part of a library now is technology space and programming space, and we're really limited there. So I think we do need something different. What and when now is a little bit less certain than I thought, than I had wanted it to be at the beginning of the year.
Any other questions? All right then.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Dr. Stanage, who I see is here.
Congrats on your retirement, Dave.
You got a permanent job fishing, Dave? You have a permanent job fishing?
Fishing guide.
Oh, I'll get the, yes, I can do.
How's the building coming along, Dr. Stanage? You're ready?
So I, I wanted to talk to you today primarily about.
Microphone?
Crisis. I wanted to talk to you today primarily about the Crisis Care Center. And ask for your support again for Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, but really emphasize the Crisis Care Center and try to help you understand why your funding is so important and how the money is spent.
Patty, is this funding coming for the opioid settlement? What do you say?
You guys did a resolution?
Okay.
So I don't think this, this money, we're not talking about the opioid settlement money. We're talking about the routine.
That's different money.
Budget contribution. So. So if Andrew pulls it up, I'll tell you exactly what the budget ask is for this year. Okay, just, yes. Okay. So I'm going to focus today primarily on what we call the Core Center, Crisis Outreach Response and Engagement. Our Crisis Care Center is probably the biggest thing that's happened in behavioral health care in South Dakota in my career. So you're talking about the past forty years. That, I'm going to share that with you and try to help you understand the importance of your contribution to Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health. This year's budget request or last year's budget request was a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars. We're asking our counties for a three percent increase. I've been to every county, I think now, except for Clay County, and they have all agreed to provide the three percent increase. So the Crisis Care Center is really two things, if you think about it. It's a crisis care access center, meaning that somebody can access crisis care. Doesn't matter if it's mental health or substance use related twenty four seven. That means family. It means law enforcement. It means somebody that's on a mental health hold. That's twenty four seven. Somebody's there to work with the individual or work with the families. The Crisis Care Center provides an alternative to emergency rooms, to jails, people being held or seen in jails, inpatient psychiatric hospitals, law enforcement personnel, and I'm not kidding, and Wanda is aware of this, but there's been times in the past where law enforcement has actually had to sit with somebody for ten, twelve, fourteen hours waiting for an inpatient bed. That, we had a statewide meeting probably a month ago. And one of the deputy sheriffs from, I can't remember if it was Hutchinson or Douglas County, raised their hand and said, the last time that they utilized the Crisis Care Center, they thought they did something wrong because they were told they could leave in fifteen minutes. So somebody presents, there's a nursing assessment that happens, there's a decision that made, is made, whether or not they're beyond our ability to care for them. And, and it's important to understand that we're doing that assessment. We're not sending somebody to the emergency room to have medical clearance before we work with them. That the Core Center, the, the, the second part of the Core Center that's really important to you, for you to understand is that it's an access center, somebody can come twenty four seven. But then the second part of the Crisis Care Center is residential crisis stabilization. So if it's deemed that we can't get somebody stabilized and turned around in a relatively short period of time, then we do have the capacity to house them. Typically, we're thinking about individuals for up to five days on a mental illness hold, for example. Hold them for the days prior to their hearing in those examples. We do hold both adults and kids do residential stabilization. Kids, we try to keep that to like twenty three hours, twenty four hours, although we have kept kids for more than that on some occasions when we just can't find an alternative placement for them. That in the Crisis Care Center, there's twenty four seven nursing, twenty four seven security. There's a, we call them behavioral health tech that would, that is there. And we have medical care by telephone or if, if need be in person by a nurse practitioner. We also collaborate with nine one one, would collaborate with AVAL Care if law enforcement's using that. And in both of those instances, if it's somebody that can't be managed either with nine eight eight or through AVAL, then they do come with us and we get reports actually every morning if they've had contact with somebody in our service area. Right now we have a bed capacity for eight in, by the end of July, we'll have a capacity for fourteen beds. So this, this, yes.
You're full most of the time with eight, aren't you?
I'm not going to say that we're full. Our average daily census is running about two and a half individuals. But you have to remember that we have a capacity for females, we have a capacity for males, and we have a capacity for kids. And so we, we give the state a report every morning in terms of what we have available. Typically, we don't have a male bed. We'll more often have a female bed or adolescent bed. And that's one of the, the other thing that's really important to understand, and we've been, been trying to make this point with the state, is that we can't run, they can't treat this as an inpatient unit where you're really running it based on the bed days that you're providing. It's run more like an emergency department and you have to have that capacity because you can't turn people away. The whole, the whole idea is not to be able to turn people away. So we're working with individuals who are coming either voluntarily or on a mental illness hold. And we were certified as an appropriate regional facility. I think we were the first one in the state. And to understand that, it's important that you understand that in the past, there were, I think, three appropriate regional facilities in the state, McKinnon Hospital, St. Luke's in Aberdeen and Regional West. HSC was never considered an appropriate regional facility. So if you were going to hold somebody for the pre-commitment hearing days, you had to use an appropriate regional facility. Or you had to do the, actually before the, the certification examination, you had to use an appropriate regional facility. And that was very limited. As part of the, the wisdom of the state and doing regional crisis care centers, then we became an appropriate regional facility, the Crisis Care Center did. There's now an appropriate regional facility in Watertown, Mitchell and Rapid City. So in addition to those inpatient facilities. But if somebody comes into the center, they're assessed often for self harm, suicide, for substance use intoxication. And then we also provide follow up for that individual when they come in for the next day. We set them up for whatever outpatient services they might need. It's important, and I think it's really important that you understand that it doesn't matter what the behavioral health crisis is. It can be mental health, it can be suicide, it can be substance use related, it can be alcohol, it can be opioids, it can be stimulants. Somebody can, can come in and because they're having a psychotic episode because of methamphetamine use, for example, and we'll manage.
And I, I think that's an important point to, to bring up is we don't want to put somebody who's detoxing in the Yankton County jail where this is a much better place to put them so they can be monitored. I mean, there are cases throughout the nation where people go into a jail and.
Going to die.
So I think that's an important thing to, to bring up because jails are good for holding people, but not when they're suffering medical.
You know, this is getting ahead of myself a little bit because it's talking about the monetary end. And I, I think the important thing is the service that we provide to people. But in Yankton County, when somebody needed detox prior, they were detoxed at Avera Sacred Heart Hospital. They were detoxed in intensive care, which is a pretty expensive way to do detox. And that could end up being a bill to Yankton County because of indigent care, but I'm getting ahead of myself there. So this is the region we serve. We serve region four. We serve really all the way out to Chamberlain for crisis care. However, Mitchell just opened four beds, so we'll work with Mitchell and in many instances, if Mitchell can serve somebody, they'll serve them and then we'll back Mitchell up and that, that facility just opened. This gets into the numbers and I have Yankton County numbers and this is from July of twenty four to May of twenty five. Total crisis contacts, a little over thirteen hundred, eight hundred and eighty six of those were Yankton County. Yankton County has the bulk of the individuals that we serve, three hundred and ninety total distinct individuals, two hundred and fifteen from Yankton County. Admissions, this is then going into admissions to the Crisis Care Center. Seven hundred and forty one, five hundred and six for Yankton County. Total pediatric admissions from Yankton County were forty four. Admission types, you can see this, that adults, pediatric, adult mental health, adult substance use and pediatric, and then voluntary and involuntary. Twenty seven are invol, twenty seven percent are involuntary. Something that we're seeing in our statistics is that there has been a dramatic decrease in the number of people that we're seeing secondary to mental illness holds versus people that are coming in voluntarily. And again, I don't want to emphasize the money part of it, but that's taking that completely off your plate then. If, if somebody doesn't have to be, get care through a mental health commitment, the county is off the hook for because historically for mental illness holds, counties on the hook for the pre-commitment, pre-hearing commitment cost.
So we're seeing more people voluntarily coming in.
Seeing more people voluntarily.
And, and that might be beneficial that they're getting treatment before they hit absolute rock bottom. And then there's other legal consequences through the court system.
Right. And there's, I mean, that just, it kind of ripples through the whole system. Families have an opt, an option. Families can transport somebody to Core, not having to get law enforcement to transport. The other thing that's huge for the county is that we looked at the data and Sacred Heart did this for us of the reasons for ER admissions the year prior to us opening the year after, the full year after we were open. And there was a seventy five percent reduction in ER visits second to a, secondary to a behavioral health chief complaint. So we're taking a lot of load off the emergency department as well, which again impacts the county, potentially impacts the county and the county budget. Certainly, again, not emphasizing money, but in the past, just about everybody went to the emergency department who was on a hold. And even if we were doing the certification evaluation, they went to the emergency department for medical clearance. And there, it's not perfectly clear exactly what parts of the pre-commitment hearing costs the county is responsible for. But we've taken many, many of those potential costs off the counties.
Doesn't HSC still require, require a pre-admission medical clearance?
I'd answer that in two ways is that.
Yes or no?
No. That we work very closely with HSC and in many cases they accept our medical clearance if they're going on. That's, that's been a hundred percent better. There are instances where they will require that, but it's much less frequent than what it has been in the past. So. And there, there's, there are just many fewer individuals are going on to HSC. So average daily census is two and a half individuals, average length of stay is about two and a half days. And then this gives you an idea of discharge dispositions. Seventy one percent of them go home. And then you can see the, those that go onto Avera Behavioral Health, HSC. Some of them go on to three point seven inpatient substance use treatment. And then this is interesting to us because it was a, it was a major concern is how many would need to have a higher level of security? How many would need a higher level of medical care? And less than one percent actually need to go on to the emergency department, for example. They come in, they're beyond our parameters. We have parameters for, for symptoms related to withdrawal, C W O scores. We have parameters related to blood pressure and those kinds of things. One percent, two percent, we do need to go on and help be held in jail just because they're too violent. So we thought those numbers would be higher, to be honest with you. Forty nine percent of holds are discharged home. And that's, you know, in the, in the old days when most of the, the certification evaluations were being done in the ED. I know many years ago I looked at that and if they were being done in the ED, probably ninety percent of them went on to a hospital setting. So. You know, again, talking about money, cost avoidance for the county. Certainly they increased access to voluntary crisis stabilization, decreased utilization of the hospital emergency departments, decrease in ED admissions for screening for inpatient admissions, decrease admission to HSC or other inpatient facilities would take, takes you off the hook at HSC for that six hundred dollars, or if it's McKinnon, those costs for pre-commitment hearing days. And then a huge one is this, the reduction in cost of law enforcement time. And, you know, we deal with some of the smaller communities, you know, Elchester in Union County, the county sheriff makes the municipal law enforcement do the mental illness holds and transports. And if that happens in, in Elchester, that law enforcement officer is off the street there. They don't have any coverage. So that's, that's huge. There was one more slide I thought, Andrew. Okay, that, so that's there. The, the other thing that I would point out is that, and this is important to understand, that the, the states, the reason that the state wanted to do this was to really reduce the short term admissions to the Human Services Center. There were many people going out to HSC and the sheriffs would complain about this, that, that they would beat the sheriff back home because they were there for a day, one, two, three, four days, weren't there long enough for their, their hearing. So the overall purpose of this is to, to preserve HSC for the people that really do need longer term care. And that seems to be bearing out with statistics, but because HSC's length of stay is increasing. And it's increasing because they're having less short term admissions. So your, your support, the, the county support is. So your your support, the the county support is super important because the when the state's doing this, it's probably the only area that I know of where the the dollars are going in the direction of the state assuming more responsibility. And when I deal with the state, they say, well, you know, what what skin does the county have in the game? And I'm able, I'm able to look, I'm able to look at your contribution and use that. And and it becomes a, it's it's an, it becomes a big issue because you have counties like Minnehaw and Pennington County that are spending a lot of dollars on this kind of of thing, crisis care, detox. Well, they have the tax base to support it, you know, we don't. And and although your contribution is a small part of our budget, small part of what we do, it allows me to leverage the money from the state, and that's why your contribution is so huge. I would hope that as you see a reduction in your mental health costs, that you would preserve those dollars to help us really do this for the citizens of Yankton County. Because it's huge.
You provide us with a copy of the overheads?
Yes.
Also gonna give you an issue for our open house on July six. Please do come to the open houses.
Isn't RSVP required? Thank you. I don't get an invite? That's understandable, though.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yes. We will do a
No, John is here.
Well, I think it's
I'm John today.
A a big credit you were able to get this accomplished after standing, it's I think it'll be a good thing for the community.
Yeah, it's it's huge for the community, so questions?
Do you notice that the number of involuntary commitments is markedly lower?
It, well, if you just look at hearings, yes, dramatically lower.
Yeah.
You know, there was a time when we were doing
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen on a Friday.
Right, and
Particularly in July.
Yeah, a a big day for hearings is four, five at most.
Do you do you credit that with people getting help voluntarily before it gets to that?
I think a lot of it is is access to voluntary.
And when when you have something like this and people are struggling, they realize that they can go in on the ground and get care before they're forced into it?
Well, yeah, and you know, and you, if you think about it, you know, in the past, you would have somebody that might have been intoxicated, maybe had a very serious suicide attempt, had a loaded gun. You know, you gotta do something because they're at really high risk and but if you can admit them overnight, you know, sober them up and then, you know, work with them the next day, work with their family. You don't need to use an inpatient level of care, and so that's why this is such a sea change for behavioral health services. And then the idea of not siloing mental health and substance use related, you know, thirty percent of the people that have, you know, severe mental illness are probably gonna have a substance use disorder as well, so.
And all all the counties in our region, they all contribute to to use?
So our our seven, our our primary service area are the seven counties and they do the additional counties that the state added for the crisis care, the state takes care of.
So somebody who goes to your treatment facility would still have to check the box that, yes, they've been at somewhere to keep them theoretically from getting a pistol, correct?
The the whole vision regarding getting a firearm would be if you were committed.
So your facility would not trigger that?
You're only committed after the hearing, so. Good question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Yep, thank you. And now we have Southeast Public Transport or Transit, I'm sorry. We're a little, we're a little behind now. We're not pointing any fingers.
Well, my name's Lacey and I'm operation supervisor for Southeast Public Transit. You guys know us more from Yankton Transit, but we rebranded this year because we merged with Vermillion. So we are now supporting Clay and Yankton County. But the numbers I'm bringing you today are Yankton County numbers. As of this fiscal year so far, we have provided forty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight rides. This includes anything from employment, recreation, shopping, medical appointments. We do in-town rides at a low and a reduced fare of two dollars and fifty cents still. That's kind of remained steady over the past few years. And our, with the increase of people out by the lake, we're going out by the lake more. Also on the east side of town with the trailer parks as well, we got a lot of youth coming out of that. The trailer parks over there, so that's helping with education rides. Our education numbers did decrease this last year, just mostly because of employ- well, drivers on our side. We we do or we did get right back up to our numbers, so we have drivers available.
So our education rides instead of school bus?
Um, it's a s- not, yes, kind of. But it's not, there, we don't have after-school bussing, so it's a lot of preschool rides because we do not offer preschool rides here in town. So we're doing a lot of those. We're doing a lot of after-school, so our after-school numbers are a lot higher than our morning rides. Just because some of those, we have parents that have little kiddos that they just don't want to walk in a block and a half to a bus stop and sitting. Don't get me wrong, we have to have those talks with parents too, saying that you're putting them on a bus, that's a public transit as well, so they're, you know, somebody is getting on that bus along with their children, it's just not youth, because they are blended right into our daily because we're not allowed to just do youth on our buses. The biggest thing is, is we are asking or requesting seventy-five hundred dollars. That is a little bit of a crease from last year. But solely just because, like any other local nonprofit, is our our funding's going down, our expenses are getting higher, our buses went from, took a forty thousand dollar increase on our prices of those, so that was the biggest thing. Our vans even, just simply of buying a van is literally fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars more than a typical van, so.
We just brought bought a couple prison transport vans. I mean, we understand how expensive that is.
Yes, they are not, and just to maintain them as well, insurance costs, all that kind of stuff, and that's basically the main reason we're running these funds is operating funds.
Lacey, have you have you thought about increasing your fees?
We have. We've we've gone over that. It takes a huge study for us for us to do that. We're kind of, we just got done redoing our rebranding. We're looking at all those kind of things that is in our near future.
When's the last time you guys raised your fees?
Honestly, that was pre-me, and I'm not for sure when that was, so it had to have been at least over three years ago or more, so. And it was two at that time, so it went up fifty cents. That is a standard rate in the region, though. You're not gonna get much higher than that. Not that we're not against it, it's just that that's pretty standard for all local transits in the area.
And and you're, like, your transit, it's it's more of a service, it's not a money generator, so you you
Correct.
you probably really lose money every, if you do?
Yes.
Even at two fifty?
Yep, yep. The one thing that has helped us out, we are just expanding our reach to other businesses in here in town. A lot of the people you spoke with today, we have partnerships with. We're doing stuff with Upcoming, we're doing Yankton County Game Fish and Park, we're doing a ride for them where all the officials come in and they do a tour of the county. We're doing that here July tenth. We do stuff with the city for Safety City, we provide the rides for them. So we just do, we're trying to further our outreach outreach to the county, trying to get people to go out more. We just did one with a senior center where we took them about the county to see all the they had a self-renowned tour guide, which was just a local farmer. And he went around the county and showed them basically things. He showed them basically the big tree that used to be there thirty years ago, but they had a great time. But it was a good time for everybody. But other than that, it's it's going good, but things are tight. We make the best of it. We have really great drivers that help promote it as well. We're doing our fundraising duties as well. That's new to us. That's not something we've actually done. But the local match needs to happen and we really need your guys' support with it because nothing's getting cheaper, especially those buses, so. Other than that, that's all I got for you guys.
How much did you say you were asking for?
Seventy-five hundred. We were asking five thousand before. We've gotten five thousand previously.
And how many buses or?
How many do we have in our fleet? We have thirteen in our fleet. So we have ten buses and three vans. Two of them are ADA and one is a standard Town and Country. So and then we, most of our stuff, most of our vans are going out of town.
Oh, I know, had some, I'm sorry, I know we had some requests for from our state's attorney for the juvenile delinquent program when kids aren't going to school. And I know you guys are busy too, but if we have that happen, we're in during the year where a kid needs a ride, is is there availability for that? Is there not? I mean, how does that?
We have a partnership with diversion
Okay.
currently. Is it something else besides that?
I I think we had some situations where you guys were full or or at least what we were told couldn't do that, and would there be a way, you know, to accommodate us a little more? Because then
Yeah, and that's what the biggest thing was.
And then, yeah, because then when that doesn't happen, we have to either send out employees. I think for a while we had to hire a taxi cab service, so that's
Your bus drivers don't get out of the bus, though, do they? They don't go to the door, knock on the door and say, it's little Johnny here.
No, well, well, let's just be very clear, we are a door-to-door service, but we're more of a door-to-door service for the elderly more than knocking on a door and making my, the driver's responsibility to get the child out the door. Not that we don't, I mean, we
It's the parent's responsibility to get them to school.
Yeah.
Which appears to be lacking.
Yeah, and the thing is, is one of the biggest things, but it still requires somebody available, is having somebody there to as a somebody on the bus, basically, to do that, but usually it's when they see that white bus and they're honking a couple times, usually they don't want to be noticed anyways, so they're gonna hurry up and get on the bus and go. I mean, that's just the biggest thing, but I mean, we're there to help. I mean, as long as you reach out again, we're glad to help because we do foresee the, even the youth rides with the new trail, dry, trailhead, excuse me, Sina.
And and why is it that there can't be a, like, a dedicated youth bus? Is there, what's the reasoning behind?
Because of a school bus. We have a school bus available here, and we are a public transit. We do not, are not certified to do school bus truly.
Do it for everybody.
Yeah.
And then does the school bus, they do they offer in how, in-town rides or are they just out of town?
Cars.
No, no, the the school
The school, well, I'm not a hundred percent, I just know off of my thing because I don't directly involve myself with that, but they do out-of-town and in-town because they have the bus stops here in town and then they go primarily out of town, because I know in the evenings, I believe, they go out of town. The buses do, but in-town they don't. So kids, if they want to go, if they're going to Lincoln and they live on the southeast corner of town, there's no rides to get them there.
Are your buses the buses that have the advertising on them?
Yeah, the big white buses currently. Hopefully, in the very near future, they won't be white anymore and they'll be filled with ads because that's what we're working on, but yes, that's what they are. Yep.
I don't have any more questions, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Well, that's the last thing on the agenda.
I'd like
But but I think we need to also have an opportunity for public comment again.
Too, were we gonna go over revenue today, Patty? Are you ready for that?
It's not on the agenda, though.
Well, I don't think it needs to, because we're not gonna take any action on it, but I I how, speaking with Don, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't really think we can start getting a full picture until we look through our revenue and we get an approximation of where we're gonna be, and then we're gonna have to go back through these, but that's
That's fine.
What what do you think, Patty?
Yeah, we have to talk, because kind of in a little time crunch, you know.
And yeah.
I'd like to have this the provisional budget.
Hey, is everybody okay if we have Patty go through our projected revenue?
Sure, let's go through our projected revenue.
I just wanted for dates.
Days for the next meeting?
Well, because I'd like to have the provisional budget approved, maybe that either the last week in July or
I could do
Or, you know, the twenty-first through that.
Yeah.
And then, because I have to publish two times in August. And we can talk about it then, and then it has to be approved September sixteenth.
So we can talk about it the second.
I could probably do
Second, what?
Thursday, I could do Thursday this week. Next week is not good for me. And then the week the fifteenth, I could, we could probably do something that time, but I don't know what your guys' schedule is.
I didn't bring my calendar. I didn't know we were scheduling again today. So what's the reason we can't talk about it right now?
No, I think we can, we can, but but for Patty's sake, she has to advertise ten days in advance the provisional budget for August.
I get it.
We gotta have that ready for her to advertise.
I understand that, but if you were talking about it today, why do we need to schedule it to talk about it in the future? Why don't we just talk about the income today?
To talk about the revenue, I agree. Then we're gonna need to go back through this book and do our final determinations.
Agreed.
We're gonna do, then we gotta get that, Patty. Then she's gotta publish it ten days in advance.
Why don't we put our budget on the second Tuesday? Or, I'm sorry, the third Tuesday of the month of July, since we're all gonna be here anyway.
When, what time?
Well, why don't we start at five?
I I if we got other, I don't know what's, Gary, do we have any idea what's on that agenda?
Not much.
Because if we're, if, and and this is what we've done in
Well, I do the agenda.
If we do the budget line by line, which we probably need to do, it's gonna take a while. And if we have our business that we normally do, say it takes an hour and a half, two hours, and then we have a couple hours, but I mean, it's gonna be a long, long night. If you want to do that.
Whether we do one long night or four lo- shorter days, who cares?
I'm open to whatever the commission wants to do, but we're gonna
Take a day and get it done.
We're gonna have to decide because the department heads, some of them submitted three percent increase, some of them four, some of them have two steps, some of them have one step, some of them have no steps. We have a lot of these outside agencies that are all requesting increases. We're gonna have to see, so that could be a long conversation. That that's where I'm at.
One of the things that I would like to see the commissioners do before our next meeting is I I'd like for them to think about what 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 the challenge is, what 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 is the purpose of of county government? Are we supposed to prepare allowances? Are we supposed to write down the line? There's tons of things that we should agree on. This is our, this is our mission. And mainly, I I think we're talking about police and roads and that's ninety-nine percent of it, but we're off on these.
We're also off on tangents with department heads that think they need to spend money, in my opinion, just to spend money.
You're exactly right.
And, oh, I had an X number of budget last year, I'm going to increase it. I mean, that was fine when we had millions of dollars of I mean, that was fine when we had millions of dollars of COVID money.
Look at our report.
It doesn't reflect that.
It doesn't reflect that. They did, some of them didn't even use near half of it.
Well
I don't know why they didn't.
Well, we're also halfway through the year and I find it helpful. No, I, I get that, but when you look at, and I'll randomly pick one. And we're halfway through the year and they request seventy-five thousand, for example, and year to date, they've used twenty-five. Well, that to me indicates that maybe they don't need an increase. And I don't mean to sound harsh because all of the county employees are appreciated, but when somebody says their people are working harder than other people's people within a department, it seems somewhat off putting.
But before we get to Dan's point, I think to your point too. We gotta go through this revenues and, and get some totals so we know where we're at.
Well, I think we have the totals without grants has been provided by the auditor. And I think those are pretty fixed numbers.
The general, you know, the general fund doesn't rely on grants that much.
Yeah. So without considering any grant money.
I, I, I think when we, when we talk about county expenses and revenues and we talk about the general fund and the other funds. To me, it's all
One fund.
It's all one fund. If you owe the money, you owe the money.
Well, but if you get the money, you get the money.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, there are some things that obviously we can't count on. We can't count on marriage licenses. We can't count on pistol permits because nobody needs one anymore. We can't count on zoning permits. And this is just based on what the past has shown, but you know, if people decide not to build anything more in the county, that money goes by.
Medical cannabis licensing. I mean, you know, if those decide to close up, we won't be getting that in the future. You know, to your point, yeah, I agree. And, uh, well
I, I'd like to I'd, I'd rather come and do another two hour meeting with nobody here but us discussing it.
I don't know if we get to do that with nobody here. As long as five of us are here.
Well, that's
People coming to give presentations.
I, I think we gotta, we gotta go through some of these fundings and, and debate them and, and you know, get some input from Ryan there. But if we're, uh, when Mike presented his budget, we cut a million dollars out of the highway budget. And I guess I find it
Two million.
Well, I find it really hard to maybe fund some of these, some of these other programs, which I'm not saying they're not great. But it is our responsibility and our responsibility alone to take care of county roads. And do we fund these other great programs? Why not taking care of roads and bridges? I don't know. That's, that's something we're gonna have to all decide.
I can't, uh, I can't justify the county paying any money to the county, you know? Yeah.
I agree in that sense because, yeah, and just as Dan says, like, what are we here, here for? What are the most important things for all the, all the residents in the county? It's roads, it's bridges, it's
Well, I don't know that it was on our agenda to discuss this today, but having said that, I don't know that it's on the county's criteria to fund the contact center for people who are out of state.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and if the contact center does not believe that they should be intrusive into somebody where they live. I mean, I know on Friday I got a text message when we were in here about how that there was a van from Ponca, Nebraska. Loading the van up with items from the contact center. Not only are they not of this county, they're not of this state. And the Ponca tribe has their own casino or whatever it's called. And according to my research, we all know that the internet and Wikipedia is very reliable, that gaming institution owned by that tribe paid out over eight million dollars last year. You would think if they have eight million dollars coming in, they have money, or eight million dollars going out, rather. They had eight, at least eight million coming in. Maybe they could share some of their largess with some of their enrolled members of their tribe.
I can't I was gonna make a smart ass remark.
So you should probably do it after we're off.
I, I think we're, we're pretty much united on the fact that this is a time to, with our budget as tight it is, we gotta circle our wagons and we gotta look what's statutorily required because we won't have a choice. We gotta fund that. And then what else in that loop is something that only county can do, roads and bridges and those types of things? And then the other funding that's discretionary, I think we need to take a long, hard look at that. Some of them, like what Dr. Standage said here, you know, that's something we probably should fund because
It saves the county money.
You know, other things that have been suggested, you know? Maybe we, we gotta cut back this year. And, you know, as, as Ryan suggested.
Well, what, what we have to look at is like, it starts with revenue. What is our expected revenue? What can, what can we spend? Because, yeah. Like, it, it would be nice to keep some of these periods that we've funded for many years, but you know, we have to, we have to pay for the things that benefit everyone first here in Yankton County.
We were talking for, as long as I've been around here about why we don't put forty thousand dollars into this fund to replace road graders in this fund to replace
Never been able to do it.
It's because we don't have the money.
Well, and we should, I don't think we have planned obsolescence of equipment. I mean, that may work for a for-profit trucking company, but it doesn't work for a county, in my opinion.
I got, I got a proposal here. Then how about we go through this revenue briefly, get a good understanding of what we can expect. And then we'll probably need to take this stuff home. To Don's point, I would propose another meeting and it might be hard to schedule it, but I think either day or some, some evening. And then we gotta go through all of these line by line and we have to hammer it out. If we're, we're gonna fund this this year, we're not gonna not fund it. We, we put our marks on it, get it to Patty, get our final budget together. And I, I think that's what, how we're gonna have to do it.
I'm okay with that.
So I, I if you cut like two thousand, five thousand feet in the scheme of things, that is not gonna affect a big budget like we have in the county. And you're never gonna, you're never gonna raise
Enough money.
Enough money. You're never, you're never gonna do that. The more, the more you, I'm not saying expand or spend a lot, but at the end of the year, you might be spending that anyway.
Yeah.
Cause budgets cannot be in the hole at the end of the year.
That's where it's screwed up because it can be. If you spend more damn money than you got coming in, you're gonna be in the hole. And that's
So, no. You know, this is, we, we set a budget and that's how we come up with our tax levels. And so in our budget, we have a limitation on what we can expand our budget by. And that's based on I think with
Some random number.
Two percent plus growth, right? Is that, is that what it is now? Two point nine?
I think it's
Three percent plus CPI plus growth, whichever is less of the
And so based on what we've, what we, what we taxed last year and what came in, that's our maximum our budget can grow. And then we have to make sure that we distribute that budget appropriately. Like it doesn't make sense to just strip budget down when you're gonna end up spending it anyway, because that's actually gonna hurt you. If you strip, if you say we cut it down so much that our budget is under that two point nine percent plus CPI, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot for next year. Especially if we end up spending more than what we tell again, again. You know? That's the worst case scenario is to cut our budget drastically and then overspend anyway. And then, and then come back and say, well, we can only grow up from what we cut last year. So the most important thing is look at, you know, we're probably going to have to maximize our budget up to that limit this year. And then make sure that we, we cut appropriately everywhere we can to make sure we stay within that limit.
But you know, utilities are gonna go up, supplies are gonna go up.
Insurance is gonna go up?
Those things we know we can go up. And so then we have to go look into the areas that we can cut. Like, I think we need to look at it's not just looking at twenty twenty-four or what, or your, or current budget year to date, because even though we're only halfway through.
Doesn't mean much.
It doesn't mean much, especially in these categories. Only place it means is, you know, labor, that, that's a very static linear relationship. But you look at twenty twenty-three, you look at twenty twenty-four and what was budgeted then and what was spent then? And if we start seeing, if we see that pattern of, of underspending in categories, we cut those budgets.
That seems like a no brainer.
I, I think we probably also need to make, to, to be fair. The out, outside non-statutory required organizations, maybe just a cross the board reduction. And the reason I say that is, you know, when they all came in here, all of the federal money is drying up, it's gone. And with, with the Washington, what's gonna happen? Even more of that is gonna get cut. And again, we're seeing it across the country where the, the nonprofits, the federal money dries up, they go to state, local governments. We can't, we can't fund those. There's no way. And they're, and it's terrible to say, but they're gonna have to survive on their own.
I agree with you. And that's, that's another place where, where we cut, even though the money doesn't show it in the budget. Like, yeah, that money goes out every year, but
It's the best, it's the best program that could be out there, but if it's not required by statute, I think we take a long, hard look at it and we, we just gotta do it. So, uh, proposal, but do, do we want to go through revenue and get final numbers?
We could have done that for the last fifteen minutes, I bet.
Good discussion. Patty, did you want to lead us through the revenue projections?
Well, I can't think it's, it's, these are all just proposed. I mean, I don't know, just going from the last four years.
Do we have a, uh, what's the, uh, the sum of all of these proposals? Do we have a total dollar amount?
No, not yet. I can add up all the
You, you mean of the expenses?
Well, no, we
The requests?
I wanna know, no, I wanna know all of this proposed revenue, what that, what the sum of all of this is.
I don't know. I, I haven't.
Wouldn't it be eleven million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars?
Yeah, one, I'm sorry, the one that you wanted is the general fund. But that's the only one that the general, because
That makes it
All the other monies are for other things that county can't spend.
So all of this, like the telephone tax and the delinquent taxes and, and medical cannabis, all of that equals the eleven million, seven hundred and thirty-eight, one twenty-seven?
Yes.
No grants?
If I have it, yep, that's my total.
Do we know what the request for funding is in this book total? Do we know what that is?
No.
Okay. So I need, we need to take this number and
Well, it doesn't matter if we're cutting the left hand anyway.
We, we, what I, what I think is, and we know this isn't gonna happen. If the budget request would for some reason be less than the grants, well, then that's not so bad.
You mean less than even?
If this is twice this amount, well, we got problems then.
Well, yeah.
Maybe we got problems if it equals.
Yeah. So do we want, do we want to total this up as it sits now? To get a better idea?
You mean the wants?
Yeah. Or do we go through the wants now and pare it down?
I thought we were coming back on a different day to pare down the wants.
Because it would help me understand how severe the cuts need to be if we knew where we're at now total. Maybe we're at fifteen million and we gotta cut it down to whatever number versus it being higher than that. Cause every one of those budgets significantly increased and our revenue has not increased. So
Well, I think that's something all four of us can agree on.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Patty, do you have the ability at some point today to add up all the wants?
Yes, I will.
And so that we know what the wants are so we can compare them to the haves?
Yeah.
I, I would maybe also do a request, maybe this is the time to do it as far as increases from the department heads. Maybe we can decide some had three, some had four, some had two steps, some had one steps. Where, where do we want to be at on that? Because we, we probably need that answer for you to accurately get the wants. Because they're all different.
The ones that did four, we'll have to reschedule or re-figure. Now some did do a three and a four.
I, I would propose, if you guys would allow it, maybe we just do a three percent. And that's three percent, no steps across the board for everybody. That way we're comparing apples to apples. And, and we get those numbers, we get that budget number and then we can start.
Well, that'll at least give us a starting point.
Does that sound like a plan?
I, I think that's what it should have been. Steps should only be given out on, on
Meritorious. Not just
Not just because it's a year passed.
Yeah.
That's not the reason to get a step.
And it, and it's kind of created
A problem.
A problem because there's some departments that give the three percent plus two steps.
And a two step is ridiculous.
And then there's some who don't. Yeah.
You wouldn't do very good in New York City.
Why?
Well, I was wondering about the guy, the Alexis Downgrass, for mayor.
I did not.
Oh, he's doing free buses, free, free bus rides, free school, free colleagues, free this, free that.
Yeah.
So people will be running out of New York City.
City-owned grocery stores. They go to tour, they'll get it.
So, so that's what I would propose that we get from back from the department heads, uh, three percent increase, no steps.
No steps at all or steps at their anniversary?
I, I think we need to start at no steps at all to keep it fair.
Yeah, there's, there's no steps for anniversaries. It's, it's, that's the three percent is your, your, your standard
Anniversary?
Anniversary.
And I have no problem with, with a department coming in and saying
That's what normal company
This employee is doing amazing. They're taking on twice as much responsibility. They need to be recognized. That's when we do, we don't
That's when you do a step.
We, we do
Yes.
Well, in fairness, I understand that um, the treasurer's office is laboring under a new program implemented by the state. But so is every other employee of every other county, laboring under the same thing. I'm not sure that that justifies a two-step plus a four percent um, increase. But that's just my
If we look at, at what has happened in the past couple of years, we did, what did we do last year? Four percent? Was it a four percent? So we, we did a four percent and then the departments that did two steps, it's, it's over an eight percent raise and we cannot do that year after year.
We can't. And then we have the ambulance wanting to readjust everything and give everybody, and no, I think maybe what we should do is just get rid of this whole crazy step system.
Yeah. Did, do, can we set the date for the next meeting today?
Thought you wanted to do it on Thursday.
Would, will you be ready with everything on Thursday?
No. Well, Thursday's too quick.
They'll have, the head of the department will have to give me a new type like their
Budgets.
Well, ask them all to sharpen their pencil a little bit more and
Okay, then what day? Again, keeping in mind, I did not bring my calendar on because I didn't anticipate this, so.
You pick, Wanda.
That's, that's why we could do some of it. Like the second Tuesday, because we're gonna be here anyway for some of it.
Gonna be a W meeting. Well, second Tuesday, we're not here. That's planning commission.
I'm sorry, I lied. The third, the third, the first and third, the third. Cause tomorrow is the first and we won't be ready by then.
What about, what about the seventh, Monday, the seventh? Cause, cause next week is not very good for me, uh.
Works for me, any, any day, I can make any day work, uh.
So let's start at four.
Monday, Monday, the seventh at four.
Start at four and just go until we're done.
Okay, that can work for me better, yeah.
For you, Ryan?
Yeah.
Now, is this gonna be one for all of the people to come and listen, or just all of us to come and have a?
All of our meetings are publics, but I don't think we have anybody presenting anything.
Everybody's presenting.
Yeah, so, so I would say people who wanna come sit in the audience and observe this great process, they can, but I don't think we have anybody present, because we're gonna have to make those decisions. And then when we ask for the three percent with no steps, I would like a total budget of what that is, three percent with all the budget.
You mean just a total?
Yeah.
Total for highway department, total for.
And I would like all of those to get, you know, so all of the budgets combined, and we have one final number. That's where I would like, if we could.
On this income statement, where does it show interest income?
Second to the last page.
That doesn't make sense, requested budget. You mean income?
I mean, does that make sense to you too? I mean, we gotta know the rest two numbers.
Above potential.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just gonna call it potential on mine.
So if you look at the years that we received, and you already have seventy-five thousand now.
I know, but we're still based on two or three meetings ago, we're still got money sitting at point zero five percent, which is ridiculous when I can get three point five for the county. Cause that's money that we could use to.
That's in that other fund, that's.
I know, but that's.
Five million dollar fund.
But that's still money that if somebody doesn't wanna give to the Kramer Canyon home, that's still money that's available, in theory.
You gotta remember that interest is part of the general fund toll too.
No, we get that, but.
So it's not, you can't take, you have to really take the interest away from there, it's in there.
Already.
We'll have to try, you know.
But my, my thought is the more interest income we get, the more income we have.
We, do we wanna go through any of these? Um, I, I know, maybe we should not do the department heads, because they're gonna redo those. But do we want to go through the budgets that were just presented? And if we're in agreement, we're either gonna not fund or reduce, we could probably do that today, because it was all on the agenda, we don't wanna do that?
Why don't we do it all at the same time?
I'm just thinking we could start.
I, I'd rather, I'd rather get some of the, like, okay, look at the final.
Number.
Overalls, and then, and then start on that whole mission.
Rather than just random cuts?
Yeah.
The issue on the raises, so that's three point two or four or whatever it is. We can set it at three, or we can set it at two, and then set a side fund up. Of, I, I think I calculated it right, if, if you got ten million dollars in in wages for the county times one percent, that's a hundred thousand dollars. We can put a couple hundred thousand dollars in a fund that could go for those and, and avoid uh, all the problems of trying to work at the different levels.
True, we could also make sure that our money, when it's sitting on interest, is making a reasonable amount.
I, I totally agree with that.
I mean, I'm two years nagging on this. So what? I don't know that you can just stick it off in the general or the special fu- whoops, sorry, special fund, because I think the state would state would have a problem with that.
If you can have a special fund to buy an ambulance, you can't, you can't tell me you can't have a special fund for wage salary increases.
You could put that, then make a motion when you, if you wanna do that, put, make a motion to accumulate these money dollars for
bonuses.
Payroll or hold down.
Well, why don't we put this on the agenda for, what is it, the, what's?
Go to the budget.
No, I know, but.
It's the, didn't you say the seventh?
We're coming early on the seventh, but on the twenty-first or the, either one. But let's put it on our agenda so that if people wanna come and talk about it, they can come and talk about it.
I think, okay, the seventh, let's go to the time.
We thought we picked four.
Four o'clock, that works for me.
Anything else we need to discuss for today? Patty, you gonna get the, the total asks, or do we have to wait for the, the county or the department heads now?
I'll send him an email today.
Tell him we want it by Monday, since we need it for the seventh?
Yeah.
Well, that is Monday. That's crazy.
Say by Thursday.
Yeah, we should have it by Thursday, the third, so we have it for the seventh.
Okay, some of them already did three percent, I don't know if they put steps in them, but.
I think some did. And I think um unless, unless we have anything else to talk about, Mr. Clemish.
Just say one more, all for public.
Yeah, all right, I, oh, we're recalling again for public comment, and now, now, because we have delayed and talked so long, we have somebody.
Yeah, Nancy and Andy Yankton Thrive, uh, we've been communicating with Patty on the allocation to Yankton Thrive, and there was some miscommunication. Um, we were, when we were providing the balance due, it was the due, balance due right now, we were not taking into account that in your fiscal year twenty twenty-five, you've already allocated to actually pay off that balance, so um assuming that gets paid, uh, we have provided the invoice for that, uh, Yankton Thrive does not need to be included in your twenty twenty-six budget. So I just saved you fifteen thousand dollars. But we would gladly take that as a contribution, should you decide you wanted to invest in that, but I just wanted to clarify that as we've been working through that with Patty.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Clemish, a second by Commissioner Kettering, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay, passes five zero, or four zero, I'm sorry. And we are adjourned.